All this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Eric.
Henson.
There.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Helsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Inkstrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are no changes.
To approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A proclamation, twenty twenty four Economic Development Week. Whereas economic development professionals are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and community colleges, helping to create and expand jobs that facilitate growth in these regions. And whereas the new creation, the creation of new opportunities for businesses and entrepreneurs is one of several key components to securing the city of Boone's economic future for generations to come. And whereas Boone is committed to fostering business-friendly climate that will attract and retain employers, enable the community to grow, and remain competitive on a global scale, scale, and generate new jobs and opportunities for our citizens. And whereas the Ains Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Commission is committed to providing quality resources that boost economic growth and enhance quality of life throughout Boone and Boone County. Therefore, I, Elijah Steins, Mayor of the City of Boone, do hereby proclaim May sixth, twenty twenty four through May tenth, twenty twenty four, as Economic Development Week in appreciation of all of our partners in economic development field to to do to make the city of Boone a vibrant and thriving community it is today. So we took a photograph earlier on before the meeting about this, Brenda. Did you have anything?
No, yeah, thank the council, the mayor for the opportunity to work on your behalf alongside you and our.
Thank you.
We to recognize that.
Thank you. We have another proclamation. This one is declaring May twenty twenty four Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is a part of overall holistic health. And whereas one in five adults experience mental health problem in any given year. And whereas approximately one half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and three quarters by age twenty four. And whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States and second leading cause of death among young, young adults. And ninety percent of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. Whereas text messages to the federal disaster distress hotline increased one thousand percent in twenty twenty. And whereas many Americans and Iowans are experiencing mental health challenges that they have never experienced before and need assistance to navigate the mental health system. And whereas this does not include the significant ripple effect on their families and friends. The impact of mental illness reaches families, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces. And whereas an important part of educating the community and raising stigma is raising awareness around the fact that mental health services are inclusive and of other services beside the therapist or a medication prescriber. Mental health services includes services and supports that help individuals with mental illness recover holistically, inclusive of their societal, vocational, and community contributions. And whereas mental health services support not only the individuals who live with a mental illness, but who are beneficial to their families, friends, and the community at large by decreasing homelessness, hospitalizations, and criminalization of the mentally ill, all of which imposes significant emotional, mental, and financial costs to our community. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, park and recreation agency, and citizen share the burden of mental illness and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And now therefore, I, Elijah Steins, Mayor of the City of Boone, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty four as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Boone, and call upon citizens, government agencies, park and recreation agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Boone to recommit our, to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and the steps our citizens can take to shine a light on mental illness, fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal care. Uh, Jack, did you have anything you wanted to add?
It's hard to say thank you to our mayor and city council for approving this proclamation. It's a very important proclamation, and we continue to raise awareness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item C, set a public hearing for May twentieth, twenty twenty four at six P M. For the consideration of a proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendments. Motion approved. Second, please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
D, set a public hearing for May twentieth, twenty twenty four at six P M. For a request of a rezoning change of parcels of property generally described as parcel number as described below in the twelve hundred block of South Marshall Street, use of the intersection of South Marshall Street and Crestwood Drive from C one to C three. Second, please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Item number four, public comments for items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration Employee Relations, Williamson.
No report.
B, Public Safety and Transportation, Helsa Beck.
Uh, yep, we have one thing on the agenda tonight. Uh, it's to discuss and propose no parking on the west and south side of South Jackson Street from southeast Lynn Street. Uh, some background on this. Uh, there has been heavy traffic on South Jackson and Lynn Street ever since the school opened up there. Um, right now, they do have parking on both sides of the street uh, due to just increased traffic, uh, due to the bus wanting to have their route go on that street as well. Um, it just creates very tight quarters for cars moving in and out. Uh, at the last public safety meeting, we talked about ways to help with traffic flow. And we thought that having no parking on the west and south sides of the street would help with that. Um, so parking would basically just be one-sided parking with those streets. So that's what I got, uh, yeah.
Uh, Chief, did you have anything to add?
Um, the only thing I would add is that we talked to, uh, Waylon, uh, Andrews was in on those meetings and, and he didn't think that it would be a problem for the street sweeping, uh, to have those, the no parking on those sides.
Any public comment? Any council comments?
And you have seen an increase in that traffic right there.
Just drive that street ten times a day, back and forth to work.
And.
Highly.
You've noticed.
Highly.
It's just a big zigzag back and forth through the cars. It's not all the time, but when they do park on both sides of the road, it's just like. Pressure. So we're gonna do no parking whatsoever or just during school or what are we gonna do? No, just on one side. So Cedar Street going all the way down is only on the one side. So we kind of went with Cedar Street, followed South Jackson to, to, uh, or Southeast Lynn, sorry. And then went to South Jackson and followed that, that same thing only on the east side. And then when it does blow snow and stuff, I said it will always be open for them to get the snow cleared from the roads. So we kind of, we kind of put everything in perspective when we looked at it. Uh, with the recent issues that we've had with Hancock Drive and then, and making that air, keeping that no parking. Um, we just wanted to make sure that there was still a place for people to park on South Jackson and they could still walk back that way.
You need a motion for this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the no parking or, yeah, no parking on the west and south sides of the road. Actually, B, uh. Do you want to say?
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead. Make a motion to, to direct staff to develop an ordinance to bring you for review. I move to that.
I'll second that.
Please call the roll.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Anything else, Your Honor? Thank you. Uh, utility, Inkstrom.
Uh, we just have one thing on here, uh, thirty one ninety two resolution reducing the amount by Rolling Meadows Association on a water bill due to a water leak. I'm going to hand this over to City Administrator Scare just for better excellence. Thank you. So if you remember, council had a discussion, uh, at a previous council meeting, discussed this. Again, there's a hundred and four thousand, hundred and seven dollars worth of water that was lost. Uh, generally after a certain amount, uh, there's a one point five percent multiplier added to it. In the discussions we had, uh, council felt it was acceptable to re, to take away the multiplier of one point five seven, which reduced the bill to seventy thousand, eight forty nine, seventy. Uh, with the association paying a lump sum of fifty thousand with the remaining balance to be paid in monthly installments. Um, it is our understanding from Rolling Meadows Attorney through our city attorney that this is acceptable to Rolling Meadows. I see there are some people out there. Uh, you're welcome if you want to add anything, uh, any questions, anything like that, Jeff? Good. So, uh, I would ask or recommend then that this resolution be approved, that they would owe the amount of seventy thousand, eight forty nine, seventy with those conditions.
Move to approve. Second, please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Uh, D, Economic Development, Mormon.
Yeah, there's five items on here. The first one is, uh, thirty one ninety three resolution in support of a workforce housing tax incentive. And, uh, council members Williamson and, and Henson joined with us with Brenda today. And we reviewed, um, the applications and narrowed it down. Uh, we still have some work to do. So once all that final work is done, we'll bring it to council for your approval. Uh, but I think we have a pretty good plan going forward. I think we awarded ninety thousand dollars or so. So, uh, ten, or ten out of the twelve were approved, so. When, when the rest of that information comes in, then we may be able to approve the other two. The remaining four items I am going to turn over to City Administrator Scare. Thank you. Actually, uh, sir, if you don't mind, I'll take thirty one ninety three as actually the tax credits for Case Landing. And, and I need approval for that tonight, so I'll, I'll handle that as well if you don't mind. Yep. So Resolution thirty one ninety three is, if you remember, Case Landing is the project out on South Marion Street. This is a letter supporting them, uh, for its application for, uh, I E D A state tax incentives for that project. Uh, it's for an eighteen-year in housing development, but that, that's a hundred twenty-eight total units, which we've discussed before in this, in this chamber. Um, the match from the state, as you know, was a hundred, is tax abatement, hundred percent tax bait for three years. That's our match for this grant and this incentive that they're applying for. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I would ask that you, uh, make a motion to approve Resolution number three one nine three.
Move to approve. Second, please call the roll.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is Resolution number three one nine four, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Boone and Alpha's Properties Incorporated, oh, excuse me, LLC. This is the property at eight twelve Keeler Street that the Ecnot Development Committee has been there and, uh, done a walkthrough, uh, weed match. So this is a catalyst grant with the state, uh, where the, the developer office has to commit at least a hundred thousand toward the improvement in that building. Uh, the city's match is thirty thousand dollars from the B D F part of it, which would cover the outside of the building. Uh, all this has been approved, uh, by Brenda. She's been through it on the catalyst side. Uh, Councilman Mormon and his committee have been through it on the E D side for the B D F grant. Uh, so I'd ask that, uh, approval for a resolution three one nine four.
So moved.
Second, please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Uh, number three, following up with that, I'd ask for a motion, uh, authorization to request hundred thousand dollars in catalyst funding from the state of Iowa on behalf of Alpha's Properties that will be, uh, distributed to them.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Next item, number four, is Resolution thirty one ninety five, Resolution Authorizing Participation in the Main Street Iowa Program and Designated City Officials to Represent the City on the Local Nonprofit Main Street Governing Board of Directors. This is a resolution of support for the application that will be submitted by the Main Street Committee into May, I believe it is. Uh, it endorses the submission of this application, agrees to participate in the development and financial support of the local main street program. This financial commitment is a three-year pledge of thirty thousand dollars each year towards the application and creating a sustainable and successful program. Uh, it endorses the economic rev, the district within the city. And then section four, about a city representative appointing to the board. So again, this is thirty thousand dollars a year for the next three years. Uh, financial support for the main street program, and I will ask for approval of Resolution three one nine five.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Okay, following up with that on number five, um, so as you know, this funding comes from Hotel Motel, which that occurs when we're doing our fiscal year twenty five budget. Uh, because of timing, this was not, uh, this funding was not, uh, requested at the time we're doing Hotel Motel. And as you know, most of that money was given away due to Hotel Motel for the budget. However, uh, when we receive the designation this summer, uh, it will start right away. And the Main Street Committee will need a portion of this, uh, thirty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty five, which was not budgeted for fifteen thousand, I believe, in August. Is that right, Kelly? And then the other fifteen thousand in January of twenty five. So, uh, there are reserves to cover this, at least for this first year of funding. Uh, so, uh, I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, if council could make a motion to approve that distribution of the funds in fiscal year twenty five with the utilization of reserves from Hotel Motel.
Move to approve. Second, please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
That's the last item. Uh, Chairman, Mormon, anything further?
I don't think so. That's it. Thank you.
Six, thank you. Number six, Department of Reports, A, Building Official, Dave. Uh, B, Clerk Finance Officer, Andrea. It's the last time I can say that.
Every three years, we go out for bank RFPs for banking services. Uh, we have been with Vision Bank for over twenty years. Um, this year, we received RFPs back from Boone Bank and Trust, People's Bank, Vision Bank of Iowa. Um, and I have spreadsheet in here that compares them, uh, all the services that they would provide and then the charges, uh, that they have come back with, um, in the RFP. Uh, Vision Bank and People's Bank, uh, all the services are no charge. And the interest rate under Vision Bank is a negative point two. And under People's Bank, it is a positive point one zero percent. So People's Bank does win the, the bid. Um, so if there is a resolution in there, uh, if you guys, um, are good with that, we would be recommending to go with People's Bank for July one, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, banking services. I ask for a vote.
I make a motion.
Yep, second. Please call the roll.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Anything further?
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. See, City Attorney, Jim?
No report, Your Honor.
D, Director of Public Works, I will turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, Waylon has actually had on a water main break, uh, with his people, so that's why he's not here. Uh, but he wanted to let, he wanted me to tell you that the project on Eighth Street with the Mill and Overlay, the milling's been completed, they're completing the intersections and the sidewalks. And the plan is to, uh, lay the asphalt Wednesday and Thursday this week. That's all I have, sorry.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, E, Library, Jamie?
Uh, yeah, just to reiterate, um, my appreciation, library's appreciation for our support for, um, mental health for my and to let you know that the library is doing month-long, um, online program, um, programming off for mental health awareness. And, um, a lot of it's being done in section with, so a lot of that's available. Or you follow us on Facebook or check our website, it's under, thank you.
F, Park Superintendent, uh, Mike?
Hey, thank you, um, just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, the play equipment was installed at the Locking Park. Uh, we've kind of fenced it off for now until we get the play surface installed. That might be a week or so. And I'll let the, uh, Park Commission decide if we want to have it whole thing or some, or that. Looks really nice. Uh, the Park Commission this next Monday will be looking at, uh, a couple of options for the matching grades for Franklin Park. So, uh, we're excited about that as well. Uh, last Monday, but you know, we had an Arbor Day proclamation, so thank you, Mayor, for coming out. He met with myself and Navy Landis, our board chair, and, uh, we planted a Cypress at Herman Park. Um, we also started filling the pool today, so that's exciting as well. Cross our fingers.
I went by Milwaukee Park and it looks really good. Did you pick it out?
Maybe all picked it up.
Yeah.
It was made for the colors, but that's.
It looks nice. It looks, it, good improvement and it's in a good location. Yeah, it does.
Good, very much. Uh, G, Engineer, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Stu. Uh, the first one is Resolution thirty one ninety seven. So there's these next two resolutions that I'm going to speak about is the start of the Daisy Project and the improvements that need to be completed. Uh, but I'd also like to note to council that all this work that's going to be done is not only benefits Daisy Project, but also benefits the whole city, particularly the wastewater. Uh, when those improvements are made, an amount of B O Ds and things that con, of high concentration that we can take at the plant, not only for that project, but also I think for future projects for the city, which I think will, this city will benefit from. So the first one, uh, excuse me, thirty one ninety seven is Resolution Authorizing Execution of Professional Services Agreement for a Water System Liminary Engineering Report with S E H. Perry is here, he's going to participate with me on, on talking about this with you for this resolution. So this basically is a water study, uh, for our plant. If you remember, a few years ago, we did a wastewater study, uh, as well. And because the amount of water that we feel is coming in the next ten years that we will supply with the projects that we are working on, future projects that we think are coming, things like that, we feel that a, a water study for output for this plant and what we need to do is certainly needed. Uh, so that's what this resolution is for. Uh, if you look under, under one preliminary engineering report services, it lists all the things they're going to do. Uh, and number two is additional services. The cost of this wastewater, or excuse me, water study is forty seven thousand dollars. It's about ninety days out, I think. And Perry, if you could just go, obviously with your expertise, go into a little more detail of why this project is important, why the council should do this, uh, at that, at that cost and what it benefits it's going to give us for the future for the city.
Yeah, so this is a, uh, basically the first step in the process to look at the existing water system here in Boone to make sure that not only are we capable of accommodating Daisy brands, um, when they come in, uh, both in their first phase and then their ultimate phase, which is like thirty seven. It also looks at, um, the plant to be capable of actually having elder industries look at, which, um, is definitely a potential for that, as well as residential and commercial growth that we'll be seeing in the near future. So what we're going to do with this study is we're going to look up for the next twenty years, uh, what the, uh, impacts are going to be on all the industry's growth and still work, how that will impact the wells, uh, from the source side, how it impacts, uh, the storage, the treatment, and the distribution system, which are all, they play hand in hand to make sure that we get out of water to everybody in town. And, um, one of the things that is important about this is that will we require by the D N R? If we are looking at improvements, the D N R will require this study to be done. You know, what we're trying to do is get ahead of the game here so that, uh, when we do need these improvements to be made, we're ready to go. Thank you, Bill, any other?
Yeah, uh, any questions from the elected officials? Simply give us a plan, right?
Right. And what, what will actually come out of this is not only evaluating the existing facilities, it'll actually come, uh, forward with some recommendations for improvements that need to be made. Costs and so forth, how to media funding and everything for, um, accommodating industrial and other growth.
It, it just allows us to prioritize this work that we need to do. And that he'll lay out a plan for us, um, same way with wastewater treatment plant, so. It's no different than the housing study we did.
And the wastewater, right?
Yes. And it should, if I'm, it should, it'll map out what we need to do for water for the next twenty years. Yeah. In this community to ensure that all the needs are met. So if there are no more questions, um, the agreement, uh, from S E H is in your packet as well, if you could pull that out, Andrea. It lists all, what was in the resolution, relist, or everything, it gives the amount of the forty seven thousand dollars. So if there are no more questions, um, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution number three one nine seven. Uh, then that will, uh, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and then S E H will get busy on this. And again, I think we're ninety days out, twenty days out.
Yeah, we're looking at ninety days for the first draft. Then we will sit down with the city again and make sure we cover everything. And then another month, we'll have it signed and be ready to be, um, submitted to the D N R.
I'd ask for a motion. We'll approve. Second, please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Okay, my next one is Resolution number three one nine eight. This is the wastewater side. Um, if you remember, as, uh, we met previously when we were, uh, uh, working on the Daisy Project before we got it, there were, uh, certain things that we talked about in close session about, um, what was needed in, for the improvements of the wastewater. This resolution follows that. I will note in this, in this part of it, uh, people required to come up with a plan. So this isn't designing anything, this is actually just coming up with a written plan that we must submit to D N R for their approval before we can start any design on it. Um, I think that we're out, what?
Same thing.
Ninety days for the plan, and then we submit it to D N R, and that could take another thirty to sixty. So it's imperative that we, uh, start on this right now. That's why it's in front of you this evening. Again, this is part of the Daisy Project, but it also, uh, makes improvements that will benefit the whole city. In this resolution, uh, under number one, he has the facility plan services, which I just mentioned. Number two, the anti-degradation analysis services, I have no idea what that is, and Perry's going to tell us.
That is something that's also required by the D N R. Whenever the city is proposing to increase its, uh, flows and loadings to the receiving stream, you have to have an anti-degradation analysis completed along with your facility plan, which basically looks at ways to potentially reduce loadings flow to the stream. It's usually, it doesn't usually result in something in that type of situation. But we have to do it to meet the DNR requirements. It also goes out for public notice. A lot of different folks get public notice, Sierra Club, a lot of environmental agencies get this just to, so they know what the city of Boone is doing as far as increasing loadings to the receiving stream.
Okay, thank you. And number three, existing facility ID and our capacity NPD as permit. Well, I do know what that is. That is where SEH will perform, do the research and the paperwork. We feel that our plant right now can take more concentrated discharge, best way to say it, than where we're at right now. We're at, is it?
We're at four thousand.
Four thousand pounds a day?
Yeah, so the, the treatment system itself is capable of handling more than that. But the DNR has limited it to four thousand at this point in time with the permit. And what we're trying to do with this is to basically convince the DNR that we should be allowed to increase the permit amount without making any improvements at all to, so that we can accommodate a little bit more growth.
So this is the first step in, in this entire process is to get DNR to give us that permit so that we can start taking more. There are, we do have companies that would prefer that we take more of this higher concentrated discharge, but we can't do it because of that permit, so that's the reason we're going to be doing that. Number four, the nutrient reduction feasibility report services. This was done back in twenty-twenty-one. Because we're doing all this work, we're going to have to update this for the future. Things out there, I believe in the nutrient area are going to have to be done according to DNR in the future and you can please expand on it.
Yeah, so what this is, is looking at how the facility is capable of treating for phosphorus and for nitrogen for both the receiving stream, that's something that all facilities that are at a certain level and higher have to by a certain date. And so far, the DNR has been nice enough to kind of push that back in timeframe for the city of Boone over the years. But now it's coming down to the point where they're going to need something updated. And I believe it's by the twenty-twenty-six is when it officially goes into place, so this will give us some time to look at it and provide a feasibility analysis that needs to go to the DNR, along with everything else we're doing at the plant.
Thank you. So the amount of these services of this contract, total not to exceed eighty-four thousand dollars. Facility plant services fifty-two thousand, the anti-degradation analysis survey is ten thousand. The permit is five and then the nutrient feasibility report and that's an update and that's seventeen thousand for a total of eighty-four thousand. And either Perry or I will answer any questions you have.
Questions?
I think it's, it's very good that you emphasized this is for encouraging development and the betterment of the community of Boone, not only just the Daisy project. I mean, we're really benefiting the community by doing this.
Correct, and I'll just add that for the Daisy project at the full buildout, which will take two thousand thirty-seven, I think is when the full buildout is. The, the projections that we have done at today's prices, the revenue for the city when it's at full buildout is significant. I have an idea what it is, but at this point it does no good to give you an amount because it's probably just going to change and we'll just, so, but I will tell you it is significant revenue just from Daisy that will come into the city, both on the water and the, and the wastewater side. Anything else?
That's it. Okay. This was just a push that we needed. We, we had been talking about this for a couple of years. Our BOD. So, I mean, this is just the push that we needed to get this going. I think Ed and Susan will be in on that. D-Vib, T-Vib, all those two, so it's good for the city.
Staff has already met with Exer, so it's coming.
In order to move forward, we have to do this.
I make the motion. We approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Erd?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Ho-Ho Kelly? Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
That's all for engineer. H Public Safety Chief Adams.
Get your, your packet tonight. We've completed firefight testing. There's three that went through the civil service list and the civil service has pushed forward three on this list and I would look for a motion for approval by council to certify the civil service.
Seconds.
Please call the roll.
Erd?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Ho-Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Thank you. And then only other thing I have is a reminder of our annual pancake feed on May nineteenth, graduation morning. So if you have family come and bring them on up and pancakes split for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Webold. Door reporting, Aaron. Thank you. I City Administrator, Phil.
Thank you, sir. So what I have under my report here, I have a few other items after this, but one that's on the agenda, discuss chicken ordinance. The reason I'm talking about this now, because if you look under ordinances, there's two different chicken ordinances. There's the one that originally put together and then one that staff put together via my email to you. So when you get to the, the ordinances, you all can decide what you're going to do. If you're going to vote on one, not vote on one. Your options are that and Jim, please something speak up, as well as you can take no action as well. So now would be a discussion time amongst you before we actually get to the ordinances and Mayor, I'll let you take it.
Sure. And what I'd like to say right now is that Chief Webold did all the work on ordinance number twenty-three oh four, which is the first one that's listed. And as was expressed in the email, it's an ordinance that he feels comfortable that can be enforced without disrupting operations of the city. And it matches our neighbors over in Ames pretty closely in Des Moines. Personally, I've spoken to the heads of animal control in Ames and in Des Moines, and I've spoken to animal control here in the city of Boone as well. In Ames and Des Moines, they say that with their ordinances, they've had no problems at all of the way they're structured. It doesn't take up a bunch of time or anything like that. And our animal control is comfortable with this ordinance number twenty-three oh four as well. So it'd be my recommendation for council to only consider twenty-three oh four and pass that and, and deny twenty-three oh five. And I will turn it to council for further discussion.
I'm to approve.
But we'll have to wait until, we have to get to.
I, I guess I, I attended the chicken forum and thought it was interesting, but the majority of people that were in attendance were pro chickens. And so I think we do have that support for allowing chickens. The second part of that forum was really shared that they felt the, that our initial proposal was very complicated and, I guess, overdone with some of the kind of terms they used. That they felt that was, that was more than needed was kind of the message that I received when I went to that forum.
I would like to say first thanks to Terry for organizing that meeting. I think that was helpful and for working on that ordinance and chief, also for the ordinance that you put together and talking with a lot of people and stuff. Only one of the concerns that I still have is what, what would we do with chickens if they got, in the rare need that, that some would have to be taken into custody? And I just think that's something that we, we should spell out clearly before we actually vote. I, I think we're getting close. I, I would just like to see some wording that says what would happen with these chickens that, again.
So I would say that we would have to do that anyway, even if there would, were no ordinance allowed, right? We would have to have a plan to do that right now.
And what do we do with them now?
Chief, what, what, what do you believe that would happen in the instance that somebody would have?
Currently, there is, there is no plan for that now. So I think we get a hold of the main society. Main society has expressed some disinterest in wanting to be involved with the chicken thing, so we would contact our, you know, people in the community that we know and try and relocate one, I guess.
I think that's more of a policy thing rather than in the ordinance itself.
I think that based on the meeting, and everybody was there except for Corey, but I think based on that meeting, we have some work to do on this ordinance and even including the one that the chief had. The problem I have one with the chief has, and with all due respect to the chief, I appreciate the work that he does. There's absolutely no way to enforce it. We don't even know where they're going to be at. They left, they, he left some of the restrictions in there about covered and how you're going to build it and the space requirements and the setbacks. All the setbacks were a point of issue with everybody, correct? That we said we would review, but those, those remain in those. There is absolutely no way of enforcing that ordinance based on the way that is written in the one that chief did. We don't know where they're at. There's no registration or permitting. And I don't care about the permit fees and stuff like that, but we need to know where these facilities are at. How, how do you enforce an ordinance when you don't know who has them or where they're at?
I think we would enforce it the same way we enforce the other items in the animal control. Really what it's doing is.
Complaint-based ordinances do not work, Your Honor.
I'm sorry.
They don't. Because you're expecting some, you're, we're going to pass an ordinance from the city council standpoint, which is a law, basically. Right? And then we're going to expect the public to enforce it.
Yeah, that's, it works the same way over in Ames and Des Moines. That's not without precedent.
The only time that we want to be compared to Ames is when it's something we want. When we were talking about Ames EDC and the contracts with them, no. Facebook lit up. We don't want to be like Ames. We are not Ames. We are not this. Now all of a sudden we want to be Ames. I'm just saying that there is no enforcement in this provisions, either one for that matter.
Yeah.
The first one that we drafted, that we approved, is an overreach according to the people that came to the meeting. And I understand some of that, right? We all kind of agreed with that. It needs some work, including the one that the chief did, because the chief left in some of the, the provisions and stuff that they were disenchanted with.
Sure. One point on the setbacks. Actually, that's something when I did talk to the folks at Ames and Des Moines, they did wish that they had some setback provisions in there. Their recommendation was if there were to change one thing, two things actually. First would have been no roof area allowed, which is my ordinance, and the second would be to put in some setbacks, which is pretty common when you're building a structure that has setback.
No, I, I totally agree with that. That was a point of contention with a lot of the people at that meeting.
Yeah, they just wanted, they wanted it a little bit shorter on that side of things.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because it's, they can't ever get, get everything they want either, so.
But the, the thing is, is how do we police it if somebody, you know, like.
Well, a complaint-based situation like with dogs, with cats, with other animals. It's already right there in the animal control code and that kind of the point, really.
And then the other big thing that they, we, that I got from it is a, with this new one, they don't have to ask their neighbors for permission. You know, that, that was the other thing that was in there.
I'm not a big fan of that.
Was really upset about. I don't know, what other things did you see, David, that you kind of wanted?
Yeah, so there was that. Some of the setbacks weren't clear. Some people said twenty-five feet, some people said none. Obviously, none, I don't think is going to work. A lot of people didn't want a setback from the property line from the new residence. That's what I'm remembering from that. There was some, some people mentioned the number of, of birds. Should that be per square feet? Should that be? Some things like that.
I think this is one of the reasons why I didn't want to have a forum like that, because we get nitpicky about what's in the ordinance, not in the ordinance. If we pass it, we can make changes as we go along.
And I think we can make resolutions to change as needed.
If we run into a problem, we can address it down the road. So I'd, I'd rather stop kicking the can down the road on this issue. When we get to the resolutions, a strong recommendation would be to pass twenty-three oh four.
Is, if there are an urgency to that?
I guess. I think we've been talking about this and spending enough time on it. Where we have an ordinance that is going to be good enough for this time and until we find some major flaw in it down the road, that's when we need to address that.
How can, how can we, how can this council pass an ordinance that we can't enforce?
We would enforce it the same way as we enforce all of our other animal control.
We don't know where these locations are at.
We don't know where dogs are registered. We don't have.
We don't register dogs.
That is exactly the point. And based on my conversations with other cities that have these types of ordinances, they encounter no problems with them whatsoever. So.
I, I would make a motion that we table this until we can get a defined setback. The setbacks figured out. We do with the chickens figured out and I think we're getting close. I don't think we're far away. I would just be more comfortable voting on something that was spelled out specifically.
I think the setbacks are spelled out.
Right, but the public wasn't happy with them.
Well, you can't make everybody happy. All the time. You know? And we, we would have to cross that bridge of relocating animals, whether or not we have an ordinance allowing you. That has, that doesn't really have anything to do with the ordinance, right? That's a policy thing.
I'll second his motion. I have a question quick. If we were to motion second.
We, we discussed after motion second, Robert.
Just for a question, whatever, but if we were to hold off on this and we wanted to revisit whatever, would we have like a work session or when would we? Would think we could do a work session or something.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure like we do set a time to talk about this and. I mean, should it go to, originally we had talked about doing policy administration could have the, a meeting and, and refine it and then bring it to council. I don't know if that would be a better way. We go opinion on that.
This falls. Other comment?
No, that was my question.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Hansen?
Yes.
Ca- Ca-Ho Kelly? Table the discussion or the vote on chicken ordinance. Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Erd?
Yes.
Credits. Thank you. Just for your information, if you could put June twenty-sixth at two P M on your calendars, that's the date. We're going to have a ribbon cutting out at Fox Point Villas, twenty-second and Lynn.
What was the date, sorry?
That's okay, June, June, yes, sir. June twenty-sixth at two P M. Ames EDC will be doing the ribbon cutting and, and doing all the arrangements and everything for it. We've had contact and had a conversation with the developer. This is the date they requested as well, as well as Director Durham from the state can make it this day as well. My last thing is just information on the rec director position. There are twenty-two applications where the applicants fulfilled all of the requirements for applying for it. We're going to have a meeting Friday at nine with the hiring committee to go over the applications and pick the applicant, applicants who will call in for an interview. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Okay, Paul.
Second.
Ho-Ho Kelly?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Erd?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Number eight, ordinances. A and V have been tabled. C, first reading ordinance twenty-three oh six to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the finance officer language in the Code of Ordinances, amending chapters eighteen, nineteen, five and seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Erd?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Ho-Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Number nine, Mayor's comments. I have no comments. Number ten, council member comments.
I just have one quick thing. Nice on the green. The mayor was there, Corey was there.
Fantastic.
Kyle was there. It was amazing. We set a record, nine hundred and sixty-three was the count at the gate. I, it was packed. I've never seen that many people.
And weather was good.
It was good. My first time, I enjoyed it very much. I did my wife.
We had amusement rides for the kids, which packed them in and we had beautiful weather. Three out of the six last year were rained out, so good start.
Awesome.
And thank you for everybody that came.
Other council member comments.
I just want to make sure, so are, are we adding the chickens to the policy administration for the next meeting? Is that, or for their next meeting? Yeah, that's what council wants. I'll set a, a meeting at the next council meeting, May twentieth, for the three of you to get together and, and figure out which direction you want to go.
Who sits on that committee?
Is that, is that something that we can all go to and talk about or? You could, yeah, it, it's under the committee. Go ahead.
No, no.
It's under the committee.
Okay.
Uh, but you can all attend and the only three that would vote are the committee members and then.
Everyone, sorry. Can we send, can we send our notes to them then? The stuff that we made, can we, if that's okay?
Absolutely. And then I'm gathering from this conversation then, do you want it? If we have it before council on the twenty, twentieth of May, do you want it on the agenda under P and A at full council on May twentieth?
I would think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have this. So we have a utility meeting at four-thirty, so. Right after that is, or when's the? I think the utility committee, from what I have so far, probably thirty minutes. So we could start the, at five.
Okay.
Understanding you may not finish, but you may get progress and we'll have to break, obviously, for the council meeting. I, I think that we can all put some notes together and we can have a pretty good idea of what we want and I think we can move it on pretty quickly, I would hope. I'm, well, I'm, whatever, just send it to, yeah, David or Linda. I'm, I'm planning on being there. I, I'm with Eli on this. We're, we're at a good place. We just got to refine it a little.
Um, I just, I, I'm with Eli on this, we're, we're at a good place, we just got to refine it a little bit. So I think it's a good starting point with what we have, with what we will put together. Um, and I appreciate all the work that you did on that and all the input that he's given about policing them and stuff, you know, being able to see the things and. You know, his guys, it's good for them to drive around and get used to the city, they got a lot of new guys on this, on the force that can drive around and look for chickens, so.
Thank you, that's use of our police department.
So we'll have utility, our normal meeting at thirty. Um, unless you want me to start at four fifteen, uh, your chair, you want to, so you have enough time or what do you think?
Could you change it to, you want to do four fifteen for the utility?
That's fine.
Okay, four fifteen utility, May twelve, or excuse me, May twentieth, five P M. Policy and administration.
Are you talking about considering the ordinance on the twentieth?
I think probably just an update, unless you all want us to, because we won't have an ordinance for you to write.
I think we should have something help for people to see, right?
Right, so that probably the soonest, if the changes you need to make, what they direct you to on the twentieth, we come back the third for the first reading, if if that's what you wish.
Well, we can see how it goes, I mean, you can let me know what your changes are and, uh, we can maybe incorporate those in there and.
Which one were you, which one are we changing, chiefs or the originals?
I guess that's.
I'd like you to no longer consider twenty-three oh five at all.
Put Justin through the chief's one and then make edits for that.
I think, and that was, that's a pretty good place to start, I think.
Yeah, you get rid of that one and just go to the chiefs.
Yeah, nice. Good job, chief. I had to drop that a little earlier, but you good with that?
That's all I have.
Okay, any other council member comments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.